Good morning, this is the main ninth special compliance hearing of the New York State Board of Standards and Appeals. We have two applications today that we will be hearing in tandem. The first one is 56-2BZ, 317 Dayhill Road, Brooklyn. And the second one is 1-96BZ, 600 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Stuart Stein, fine slow it on behalf of the applicants. I have prepared, and you have in front of you a series of documents which we requested to bring along with us and explain the current status of the location. And if you follow along with me, I think we could answer many most of the questions you had two weeks ago. Let me emphasize before we begin. It's my recollection that one of the members and co-counsel went to meet with staff last week, and they explained what the circumstances were regarding the hall and how the location is operated. And I think some documents we previously submitted to you. There are duplicates here in this package, which I didn't know if they were wanting to distribute this throughout the board. Let me also begin by saying that we are speaking about the hall, and the hall is actually the very lifeblood of this institution. Without the hall, there is a very, very strong possibility that the school cannot substantially quite sustain itself. So I think it's most important that we accommodate, we answer all your questions, and we show you that we're operating in a safe capacity, recognizing the concerns of the neighbors. And we have been doing that for quite some time, and will in fact do that going forward. So to begin, the board had asked me to bring many of the members here who were involved in the everyday operation of the school and the hall. We have various administrators, we have the person who runs the hall, and we have members of the committee, the school is run by a committee, and they serve dual roles as both sometimes administrators and policymakers for the school. The first question we were asked is the current ownership of both locations. If you look at item number one, that is a deed for 600 McDonald Avenue. And item number two is a deed for 317 Dayhill Road. They are both the same owner, congregation Bells Beth Malka, which is also known as the applicant Benos Jerusalem Dehassidic Bells. And but it is a 501(c)(3) corporation.
Just to clarify, these aren't actually deeds, these are just, these are actress.
These are abstracts from, from actress, that's correct. But they were printed yesterday, and what they do show is the last record deed holder. Next up is the... Is the temporary public assembly permit issued under the signature of the Borough Commissioner, Ira Bluckman, for the period September 4th through September 22nd. I will note for the record that that's number three, and that is CC'd to the Emergency Response Team, Brooklyn North NYPD, LPPA Fire Department, who is a part of the agency that supervises all operations. Next up are the plans that were submitted as part of the TPA application. They were submitted by Mr. Pinner, Pinner Associates, who is here today. If you have any questions regarding those plans. Next up is number five, which is a fire department inspection report issued on the opening day of the TPA 9613. And I'll ask you to note, page two, it says, "Description of the place of assembly and floor plans do not match as per section 28.117.1.1." I then ask you to turn to the plans that were submitted in response to that. Notice a violation issued by the Buildings Department, once again, Mr. Pinner's plans, and they are dated September 13th, 2006, so that was followed up within the week.
You said 2006 or 2016?
16, yes. Next up is the number seven, is the TPA approval issued again by Mr. Bluckman, dated October 25th, 2016, and it covers the period October 27th, 2016 to January 31st, 2017. Again, I point you to page two, which indicates that this is CC'd to the Fire Department Emergency Response Team. Next up are the plans, dated October 21st, again, done by Mr. Pinner, and these are the plans that are accompanied by the administration, but that was given for that TPA. Number eight, if you remember at the November hearing.
Sorry.
Would you like me to study?
Only if you really started.
Number eight, there was controversy at the November hearing, if you remember. The Fire Department was unaware that a temporary public assembly permit was issued.
Sorry, Mr. Pinner, you could actually start.
Start again, okay, surely. I have before you, well, let me begin by saying that all of the members of the establishment are here, from administrators to parents to committee members, people who control the hall and who run the school, and here to answer any questions that may have. I've put together a list of items that you can look at, which I believe will answer most of the questions asked. I believe that the members of the synagogue, representatives of synagogues, met with staff last week, went over much of this stuff, some of it was submitted at that time, but I chose to replicate it so that the whole board members will be sure to have. The first document, the first two documents are the deeds, or an abstract of the deed, indicating that the both locations, 600 and 317, are owned by the congregation. And this is an abstract of the actress that I printed last night, actually earlier this morning, indicating that they're both owned by the same body, we'll back with the abstract. The third item is the TPA issued by Ira Bluckman, dated September 2nd, 2016, covering the period September 4th, 2016 to September 22nd, 2016. As previously noted, this was CC'd to the Fire Department by Mr. Bluckman, the Emergency Response Team, Brooklyn North NYPD, also was sent to NYPD and the LPPA Fire Department. Item number four are the plans executed by Mr. Pinner, who's with us today, that Mr. Bluckman used in order to issue that TPA. The next is item number five, this is a report of a Fire Department inspection on September 6th, indicating, as the board brought out before, that the place of assembly was at page two, the plans did not conform to the permit plans. As a result of that, Mr. Pinner, the next week, submitted to Mr. Bluckman, new plans dated September 13th, 2016, making the necessary changes to conform to the Fire Department's request. Number seven, this is the two items, it is, Bluckman, a renewal on the TPA, dated October 25th, 2016, again from Mr. Bluckman, again forwarded to the LPPA office of the Fire Department, and this was covering the period of time, October 27th, 2016 to January 31st, 2017, with Mr. Pinner's plans included in that, in that item, which were used by Mr. Bluckman who issued the TPA. If you remember, there was some controversy at the November meeting, where the Fire Department expressed its concern that it hadn't been notified of what was happening, and didn't know that there was a TPA for the location. This is a copy of an email I sent to Mr. Scuduto, indicating that the TPA is the previous one that sent the Fire Department, and I included copies to him. Next item is number nine.
Sorry, what did the email say?
The email, I had the opportunity to review 11:15, 16th public hearing, pertaining the above referenced matter, at 1:39 minutes, what, 39 minutes? And, I'm sorry, it's session one, at 1:39 minutes. At the hearing, he raised concerns regarding my client's apparent failure to secure public assembly for this location. In response to this, please be advised with the following. And it sends out the TPA issued on October 25th, and I forward copies to him.
Did Mr. Pinner ever respond?
I believe I spoke to him at the next hearing, and he had to see. The next item is a letter from the Fire Safety, the Fire Safety Fire Sprinkler Company, executed on May 3rd, indicating that the fire sprinkler is currently performing and is fully operational and inspected. Number 10 is from the Associated Security Group, indicating, once again, dated May 3rd, indicating the fire alarm system is fully operational and is hooked up with a Fire Department approved central station. The next item, again dated May 3rd, 2017, is a letter from the ISM, ISSM Protective Services, indicating, and I quote, "This letter confirmed that this firm has been hired by Bells Malka School, AKA Benash Yisrael, the Kassid Bells, to staff the premises with fire guards during all catered events. Beginning September 2016, we've had a minimum of four dedicated fire guards, each with a certificate of fit issued by the Fire Department at every event." We go to the next item, which is item number 12. And this is a list of all of the dates when affairs were done, or report that site, from January 1, 2017, to going through March 31st to 2018.
But these are, some of them are past the expiration date of the TPA?
That's correct.
And can you, I mean, some of the, some events could be characterized, I would say, as school events? Some were outside catering weddings, or, I mean...
Well, there's no such thing as outside catering weddings, because the catering location is run by the school, and we have somebody here who will explain it. There is no outside catering.
Sorry, that's not, I don't think, people from the outside, as opposed to high school students having, or elementary students having parties, or...
It may be a mix, but it averages approximately over 14 events a month. And you'll notice there are certain drops in the amount of events during particular times of year, and that coincides with various due holidays.
So you have events scheduled through March of this year?
March 31st, 2018. You wanted us to go forward.
Now, what type of events, can you explain what these events are?
These events mostly, well, I'll have, if we can wait a little while, I can have the event coordinator describe them. Number 13 is, again, we call on Mr. Pinner, this is a current plan of the as-built. Page two shows the location of the elevator. Page three, four, and five show the path of travel from the elevator out onto the McDonald's location. It goes up one flight, and then, I was wrong, is a slope that these containers, their third yard plastic containers, are pushed up to exit onto McDonald Avenue.
So the, so the trash goes up the elevator, is carried through the lobby and then the school, out to that side yard.
That's correct.
Through the dining room, and all those offices, and past the classrooms.
I don't think it passes the classroom.
Yeah, it does, if it's for library, school, into the playground.
But this would be out after school, as it's recessed, and once again, it's picked up every night within an hour of its displacement onto McDonald Avenue. And the place would be pretty empty at this stage of the year.
I see, but this is that trash compactor thing, right?
Well, yes, if you take a look at number five, you'll see the refrigerated trash container, eight feet by 20 feet, in the lower left-hand corner.
Right, but I also see all those buses.
Well, no, yes, you wanted a diagram of the buses on-site with the dimensions.
Right, correct, but so if the trash compactor, or refrigerated trash container is emptied after events within an hour of whatever that means exactly, how are the trash remover guys actually getting in there if there's buses parked?
Well, I think there's ample distance between the buses and the front of this, but I'll have the facility operator explain that.
And just, I think, this kind of come up in our previous hearing, you have a building labeled, three-story residential building.
Yes.
This has been represented to us from another party as a community facility, is that correct?
No, it's my understanding that on the left-hand side, we have one commercial building. On the right-hand side, I reached out, that apparently is owned by a rabbi, and he uses it very frequently, and that's my recollection. He put in a letter to the board in 2014, indicating that he had no problem with the buses being parked there, I'll re-leave a letter here. If you'll also notice that this is room for seven buses. You'll have a picture later on, indicating the off-site bus parking on Dayhill Road, which carries an additional nine buildings, nine buses. This, this next item, number 14, are the egress calculations for each of the floors, indicating...
Sorry, if we get back a first second, because there was...
What are you referring to?
So the buses, you counted seven.
Right.
And I have in my notes that at one point you had a lot for parking for nine buses.
Yes, I know, that'll come later in the...
So that's separate and apart from the seven buses.
That's off-site.
So we have a total of 16 buses.
That's correct, yes.
And that's the total, that's all the buses the school uses.
That's all the buses used, yes. In fact, I think it uses less, but it's parking for 16. The next item, number 14, and I'm sorry, I'm not particularly good with date stamp, but this is the calculations, the egress prepared by Mr. Pinner, indicating that in fact, we have more than enough egress for the TPA use. Remember, there are two different levels of use. One is 400 for catered, for catered fares, and one is 600 for use by the students. The next, the next series of items are the plans for purposes of comparison, submitted by Mr. Friedman, of 600 for McDonald Avenue, date stamped 1/28/2014. And now I look at it for comparison purposes. The next is a picture of on-site refrigerated container.
Give me a second.
I'm looking at the Friedman plans.
Right.
And on the cellar, you note the connection between the two buildings. This is on sheet number two.
Okay.
And it says cellar as per C of O.
Yes.
There's a number.
Yes.
What C of O indicated the connection of the two buildings, I don't recall that.
I have it with me, it was approved by the Buildings Department. In fact, it's a pass-through between the two buildings, in fact, that's noted in the 2002 resolution, that they were to be used in conjunction with each other.
I don't recall that at all.
Well, I have it here, I'll show you.
Can you show us where it's indicated on the resolution also?
Sure, I have it, moment. Number 16 is the on-site refrigerated box. Number 17 is a picture taken of looking towards the bus parking area. On the left-hand side is the refrigerated box. The playground area is at the forefront of the picture. It has a gate separating the two. You wanted to know the use of the playground, it is used by preschool children, approximately nine, or 10, three each day, so they are there after the buses leave and before the buses come back. Number 18 is a picture of the off-site bus parking, with seven buses there at the time, and we've measured the sufficient distance to put in at least another two or three buses at that site. In front of those, 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 in front of those buses, I'm sorry. Number 19 is a picture taken of the front of the school, that was taken yesterday afternoon, indicating its present state, it's being cleaned on a daily basis.
That's the Dayhill side.
That is the Dayhill side, yeah. And number 20 is a picture, the at the orient, the orient, with 20 in the upper right-hand corner, is a picture of the alleyway between the multiple dwellings next to us and our building, to show that it's being maintained, and that is no garbage piled up in there, and that was also taken yesterday afternoon. So with regard to the actual operation, we have the people who are responsible for that, and any questions you have, please.
Let's hear about the operation, right?
Well, just to go back to the trash, you have an event in the evening, it ends around midnight. Now, where, that trash is taken through the school at that point, and put in a refrigerated container?
It's taken, we've previously submitted pictures, they purchased rolling, rolling buckets of approximately 30 cubic yard, they're plastic, and the trash is put in there, and is led up the elevator, through the graded area, out onto McDonald's, to pick up by the private sanitation people. And we previously gave, and I will give again, the contract with the private sanitation people, showing that they pick up within a half an hour or 45 minutes when they're pulled on the night of the incident.
So they took the comment, they got around 2:00 AM?
I don't know. Around, a little after 12:00, they close at 12:00, so it matches between 12:00 and 1:00.
And you said 30 cubic yards, I don't see how a 30 cubic yard container could fit through a school building.
No, no, I said a six, a third cubic yard.
A third, oh, I'm sorry.
Now, 30 may have some difficulty.
Right, yes, absolutely.
We have the airlift in it.
So then you're saying that the amount of time that it stays in this refrigerated container is about half an hour?
Something like that, yes.
Does it ever stay for more than that?
I don't know.
Is it compacted, or is it just refrigerated?
No, it's just a refrigerated container. In the last submission, we gave you the items from the manufacturer's cut sheet, indicating that it sufficient all the storage and how it operates, so we more than happy to submit the cut sheet again.
And so, is it separated into perishables versus paper goods?
I don't know, I think it's all... I think it's all be trashables, but I'm not sure.
So actually, a lot of these questions are for the people who are managing it, so why aren't we here from who's running this?
What would you like to answer, question?
I'd like to hear actually from whoever, the highest official at the institution, the one who would be considered responsible for the institution's decision.
If they operate, it would be the assistant administrator.
Well, that's an assistant, that assumes there's an administrator or somebody.
He's your officer, but the assistant.
The person that everybody reports to, and if they do a bad job, they get fired. Who's that?
Good morning, I'm Robert Baroch, teaching CHT, I'm an administrator since April 1924.
So what, what's it actually mean, so you said you're the administrator?
Yes.
What's it mean to be the administrator?
Administrator, the time when I took it, you know, like, to turn it, but the activity, so had everything of my own, as it was growing and growing, took assistance and help, they are running the day operations, and tried to see that they're doing properly.
Okay, and when you say it, what do you mean by that, doing what properly?
Each apartment, each facility, you have the school running, the education, and then you have the transportation, and you have the catering department, each apartment from its own.
So, so then you hire the people who are going to be managing the school?
Right.
Okay, and then you hire the people who are going to be managing the catering?
Yes.
So with respect to the catering, when did that start?
It started, since we were, 10 years ago.
Did it start in the 90s?
No, we finished, no, that time we had, 2010.
When you finished the Dayhill building? The Dayhill was finished in 2010?
Yeah, the final C of O, I think, was issued sometime around there. The variance was made in 2002.
2002, the building was finished in 2010. So you're saying you're only operating the catering since around 2010?
I have the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, that doesn't tell you when you've been operating since, that just tells you you have certificate of occupancy. For what, by the way?
Certificate of occupancy is dated 8/11/2011, and it is for conjunctive use of cellar and additional building with an appropriate floor load and maximum persons. Cellar 600, first floor 150, second floor 300, third floor 300, fourth floor 200, roof 70.
What are the use groups?
The use groups are all three.
So I know it's a little arcane, but three is for a school, right? And you're aware that the approvals are for a school.
Is that for Dayhill or for McDonald?
This is for Dayhill. And just to answer a question that was previously asked by Commissioner Martinez, I'm looking at 5602BZ, and it indicates, whereas the applicant states that although the two portions of the school remain separate buildings under the administrative code and the zoning resolution, an accessway would be created between the buildings so that the institution could function more efficiently. And that was part of the plans approved by the building's department.
The reason you were asking is because about two years ago, I would say, um, we had testimony before this agency that the two buildings were not connected, were not related to each other. So, um, yeah.
That, that would be planning.
That would be.
And plans were something that did not show any connection.
Correct.
This is the first time I've actually seen.
Yeah.
Which is.
So they might have, they might have been submitted, Mr. Friedman, showing a connection, but they weren't approved with a connection.
Right.
And they weren't represented at with a connection. Um, okay. So a, and in terms of, so, so you start, you said you started the catering in two thousand ten. Um, who's the, what is, what do you do with the catering? Who handles the catering?
I think the school's supervision. Mr. George gave a disclaimer.
What do you, what do you mean it's under the?
Mr. Klein is the one that's handling it. He's coordinating it all.
What do you mean it's under the school's supervision?
It's like for community, right? So everything is under our, from, from us and to us. It ends up in our, in our.
In your pockets, right? So, so how do you find the people, how do people find you to have this department?
Very good. They get to, and some of them, Mr. Klein.
So you don't, you don't actually know that?
I must be very insane. He's coordinating it all.
Okay. Do other people have questions? But since you're the administrator, you must have been involved in the, the board of standards and appeals, it's your applications, right? When, when the initial approvals were granted for a school, right? And, um, you're aware that they were granted for a school. That is, the children in it who go to school and they do, right? And it was never granted for a catering facility. You're aware of that.
This is part of our help for the needs of the parents and these kids.
But you're aware that it was never granted for a catering facility.
It's not, it's not catering to make business, like, make money. It just wants to help out the people as that business.
Do you, do you charge for the catering?
Of course, charge.
Do you charge more than the cost of just supplying the food?
No. I try to keep it below and help our, uh, our paycheck. Cover the expenses as, cover the mortgages.
So you're saying you just cover your expenses?
That's it.
But you're aware, if I'm still asking the question, I need an answer. You're aware.
Let me tell you. I had many times that the neighbors used to come in, they wanted to take it, and I would go to talk to them.
I'm sorry, is that again?
A lot of neighbors which used to come in that they want to rent it out for their bills, you never gave them.
It's limited to people in the town.
Um, but again, I'm going to ask it again, and I want a straight answer, yes or no. Were you aware that this was an approval for a school?
Yes.
And that there was not an approval for a catering?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then let's talk to the case, the person who manages the catering.
Good morning, everybody. Thank the client.
Okay. Can you tell us about how you operate this catering?
The darks, the lots, the business park.
From the very beginning, what do you do?
The way it works is that people work, know us, but then they call us up. Mostly schools of the school, mostly. Uh, the graduate school, they know the place, it's a community, it's one community, which we have about fifteen hundred, two thousand, congregate, our community, which is called Bells. Um, large, large congregation. There's both girls' schools separately, there's boys' schools, there's high schools separately in Brooklyn. And when we originally started, we were just low, just the girls' schools, and work went out for some people in the neighborhood that, you know, very economical weddings for people today in the way where we know it's really not affordable to make weddings. But I think, I didn't check it out, but I think it's the most affordable wedding in Brooklyn, most likely. I'm not going to, like, very hard. About twelve or fifteen wedding halls, ten wedding halls in Brooklyn in our neighborhood. It's the most affordable place because we know our community cannot find them, because these girls don't go to work, they don't have any jobs, married themselves. They finish school by seventeen, something like that, by eighteen, they get engaged. That's the way it works. And especially the boys, finish school and they get. So now, this is part where we came into the community. That's originally why it was made for, again, for the community plus for the school revenue, which helps out a lot of school understand, I'm not about, and exactly how the management in the business park works, but I understand the help out of the school. And we have people calling us for dates and people are engaged long period of time ahead of, ahead of time because number one is there's no affordable halls that they can get married. So they have, they, they are pushed off for, even if they want to get married in three months, some people want to get married, there's no way because the demand is so big. And the price is so good that this, this is what happens over here in our particular place. Some other places definitely you can find a place to get married probably in two months' time. But this is not the case over here. So we are getting booked, you know, quite a lot, you know, where we are. The job is done right, the people are nice, the place is nice. Uh, that's basically how it works. People come in, they book a hall, they pay minimum fee for, you know, the ballots, and then after slowly payments, they get to the wedding. So right after the wedding, they just slow payments. And they're getting married and they're happy and, you know, again, we're only trying here to do something for the community. We are only here, like you said, like from two thousand ten, maybe two thousand nine, I don't remember the days when we started. We are the most, I mean, say, most for our community, the most reasonable place to get married and the most elegant, not elegant. Say, get money's worth. People are, are just asking for our help. Basically, their down task is asking for our help, just, 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 just do the right thing. And we're getting phone calls, counseling. You guys are doing the best thing they can do. There is nobody's going to find this price as in Brooklyn, in our neighborhood, again, Brooklyn is huge. Uh, in our circle, which probably holds like a ten or twelve wedding halls, I don't know how many, none of them are competing with the service, with the food, with the price. That's the way it works.
I have a question. I'm, I'm looking at the June twenty seventeen schedule. So those, um, events that are scheduled during the weekdays?
Mm-hmm.
What time are they open?
Usually weekday weddings start six thirty.
And the school ends?
School ends five fifteen, five, five fifteen.
Five fifteen and the, and the buses?
The buses take on the girls and, and they leave five fifteen, five thirty. And they go to their parking lot wherever they, uh, station.
So you don't have any after-school programs?
It's about five fifteen after-school program. If I remember good, I'm not about, and it's taking the, it's about five fifteen, five something like that. The girls start at eight, eight thirty in the morning.
So in terms of the, um, fire safety, so the fire safety officer from the fire department is extremely upset because there were agreements that were made that the fire safety people that you bring in are supposed to file reports and contact the fire department when these events are occurring. And that hasn't been happened. And so.
I'm sorry, I interrupt. I apologize. I, I, I don't know when that agreement was struck. If it, to my best knowledge, it was not, it was not in writing. Uh, the TPAs.
Certainly, you wouldn't want to put any of this stuff in writing. This is an illegal use. So none of this should be.
But I'm, I'm not going to argue that these are calories for the use. We're not.
It, it is in fact a non-compliant use. The building was approved to be a school. The grant, those uses are shown on approved drawings not to be used for a catering facility, whatever kind of word mincing that you want to use. We constantly have applications before us where we can tell that an auditorium is going to be used for a catering facility. We make, we stipulate clearly that this is not to be used for this, that it's a school, these are auditorium spaces, these are dining rooms for the children, right? So it's currently in illegal use and there isn't any way around that one because it's not approved by the board of standards and appeals for this use. So I don't want to have any more of that citing the case law.
I, I don't want to argue that. What I do as an attorney is I do argue case law. And, and I, I'm only addressing the issue of whether or not it was compact between the fire department and the ca, and the catering people. I don't know if that exists. What I know is, is that the TPAs that were issued by Mr. Brooks, by Mr. Luckman were forwarded to the fire department and it was confirmed by Mr. Scanduto that.
That's in two thousand, that's in two thousand sixteen. We're talking now about an expired TPA since January, giving you no authority to have any of these events there. And in addition, the fire department did meet with whoever they met with the school and worked out something. And it isn't, maybe it's not in writing, I don't know if it is in writing, and it hasn't been followed through. And hence, the fire department was extremely upset, as you can see, at the last year, right? Um, and doesn't believe that this should be operating.
The fire department's been there repeatedly. The building department has been there repeatedly. I, I.
When would repeatedly?
Well, just like, just like, excuse me. I respectfully remind the board that in the November hearing, Mr. Scanduto was unaware at that time that the TPA was issued despite the fact that it was sent to the fire department and it was later confirmed. So they, they were aware, they were aware that what was going on.
However, when you read the TPA.
Right.
When I read the TPA, it's telling me that every time we're going to have an event, the architect in record has to go and inspect the premises and sign off that certain egress and the emergency lighting and the, um, general light.
And he is, he is here today?
Right. Will do that prior to the event, which in my opinion is every event. And then that inspection will be faxed. I believe it's faxed to the fire department?
That's condition number six on, uh, September, it repeated in all the TPA.
Right. Certified to the fire department that the site is in performance. So can you produce any of the fax letters that you generated prior to each event?
Addressing the comment to me?
Addressing the TPS.
The, the fire department contacts me when they're coming, when they came to inspect the premises prior to the event.
That's not, no.
And I go there and I meet with them and address whatever concerns they may have. But they didn't write it as a report. They gave me, and I do have phone logs of that event, that they contact me, either I go or someone from my office goes and meets with them and assures them that the place is well lit, that the egress is clear, that all of the functionality of a temporary P A for the time period and for the event period is met. They don't come on every event.
That's not. No, I'm talking about you coming. They don't come, but you go or you send someone for each event and you do the inspection and you fax, either fax or mail to the fire department the results of the site visit.
They've never asked me to do that.
It's in the T A.
The department of building.
Never asked me to do it, but I can.
That's not fire department.
It's the building.
So can you produce those letters? It's for the past? So you've done it for each event?
Pardon me, Theodore Lawrence Penner from Penner Architects.
How, how long have you been involved in this project?
I was the architect that filed me through plans or date. Was not involved with the found and abandoned construction, but I was involved with the data project.
Okay. And have you been involved since then on this project? No. So you were brought back in when?
I was asked to, uh, apply for the temporary public assembly permits. And since I did the initial public assembly, and I have a great deal of familiarity with the school and with the hall, I, uh, represented them with Mr. Luckman to obtain the temporary public assemblies.
And the first one was in September of two thousand sixteen?
I believe so, yes.
But just to clarify, the, this, the catering facility has been operated since about two thousand nine, two thousand ten?
I'm going to clarify about the fire inspections. They started asking me about what is wrong. I could only say the place is being safety, safety, all the fire alarms we checked every day, fire disconnected, like I mentioned. Each and every day, we have four fire guards waiting, doing their job. Each and every event, no matter what it was, how it was, how many people, you know, school event, anything, it was a hundred percent safety. We are not here absolutely, not here to make, get angry, somebody, we are here, we're here for the community, trying to do our best. And we are absolutely here to, here, anything was, I have to say, we've never, ever missed a fire safety at all, not even, not even a needle point to say that God did something wrong, said everything a hundred percent, all the fire alarm, like you said, the fire alarm is connected to fire, to a company, minimum thing, fire department is there. The building department, I went through the building department myself, they came down, it's not mentioned in the records, I don't know why, they came down, it was approximately, um, let's say three months ago, something like that, they came in, inspected, building department, TPA, they walked around, they did all the inspections, everything was no violation, everything's fine. I personally walked down with the fire department, everything was fine with TPA. As far as the connecting of it between the fire department and sending the paperwork, that may be a miss, something misunderstanding, but again, we ask, we're here for the community and we never, ever did anything that may, may involve any fire safety, any, any personal persons involved in these, these affairs.
But you didn't ever have until September of two thousand sixteen a P A permit for six hundred, for four hundred people after five P A?
They do have a public assembly, current public assembly for six hundred people, which is a current public assembly for six hundred, which is listed as a catering hall, meeting hall, and that's a current public assembly. Temporary public assembly was reduced to four hundred people for wedding events.
And why do you think that? Like, why did they reduce it down to four hundred from six hundred?
It was the maximum number of people they asked for, they asked me for. We could have obtained a temporary public assembly for wedding for six hundred persons, which is the maximum capacity of the hall. However, they only requested a temporary P A for four hundred. They could have requested any number from six hundred.
Well, what I need to say is why, if you already have a P A permit that you, for the students, why do you think you needed a separate P A for this facility, this activity?
I believe they were instructed during the choice of the operator.
Right, but there might be a reason why, and what's the.
Well, because the, I suspect the board believes that it needed the permission from the Buildings Department to run, uh, the, the wedding events, which was done as a reaction to, uh, the boards and treaties, but other than that, I don't know why. I, I, I personally don't believe it happened.
The reason for four hundred may be because we tried to keep the community, it may be the reason.
Same.
I say the reason for four hundred was maybe because we tried to keep the community in a lower, lower crowd. People may have done because these, these people are really, really low crowd, low, you know, people that are trying to get the, the least prices possible, so that would be the four hundred. Yes, but it's all under control, you know?
So how do, how do you use the entrance for when you go down that, where the staircase? You know, the entrance before you go down into the cellar for the sit-down?
All entrances are open, coming in, there's a main entrance, there's a common entrance, it's separate facilities.
No, they enter, but then they're in that area. How is that areas? That's a much bigger area than the dining room.
Just for, you know, walking down, you know, sometimes people find themselves walking, just a lobby area.
So you don't have actual events there?
No.
No, the photographers don't take advantage of that and people come there?
Probably do things with, from the bride.
But you don't start off the event there?
There's like a, on the side, it's like a men's, men's section that they, that they. There's like a, on the side, there's like a men's, men's section that they, before they sign the paperwork or the product, there's like a small ceremony, sit down, and it's a mazel tov, you know, that is done by the men's section.
Does that area have a public assembly then?
Upstairs.
Upstairs? Close it?
If there's not, and I don't believe it needs one as a matter of public assembly, gets less than 75 people that are congregating in that area. As they enter, they enter and they go down, that area can't even hold more than that number of people, therefore cannot be required to have.
Why couldn't it hold more than 75 people and big?
You're talking about the lobbies?
I think you know grand, yeah, the grand staircase that goes down.
Hold on, your plan say 372 persons.
Yes, right.
On the, which plan are you looking at?
Six.
Moishe Freeman.
Moishe Freeman set.
Oh.
Or that, playing the dock.
Six.
Bateson 15.
Yeah, these are the ones you were about to say.
Oh, okay, so you're not really that, the architect of this little.
No, I'm not. And I see that.
Yeah, page three. Yeah, page three of your plan.
Yeah.
Oh.
So these are the travel path plans.
Oh, I see.
I have a question. Go ahead. If you look at the department buildings, if you look at the department buildings engineering and emergency operations inspection from July 19, 2016, the inspector made reference to a PAA for 1,679 people who aren't able to determine what area it's for. This is their inspection of 600 McDonald Avenue. Do you know what area that covers? Does it cover the entire school or area?
It must be the entire school. And to see if all would allow for that number, something to do.
These tables are the same tables you used for the lunchroom at high school during the day? So you don't take them down?
No.
And how many students do you have in high school?
Approximately three.
Approximately so much?
Three hundred?
Yeah. It's 70, not the exact number.
Yep. And how many in all my schools?
We have like 800, 800 from my head.
By young. Just to clarify, so all these PAs are for, for 317 Day Hill, but you've only provided a comparison of the approved versus existing versus McDonald today. Is that right?
That's right.
So has there been no change in the Day Hill configuration? We know there's been changes in McDonald, but we don't know. Right?
That was one of the questions, right? Because your group's plans say no catering.
Right. And we don't know about the site, the commercial kitchen actually is in the cellar of McDonald.
Date. Oh, yeah. So, okay, that's.
And in the original TSA group plans, there is connection with negative values.
On the Day Hill.
On the.
On the Day Hill. Day Hill is later.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the.
You know, we've had a lot of, you can say mistakes, but we've had a lot of statements at these hearings that turn out not to be the case, which is decidedly not okay. We were told that there was no catering going on in so many words at the McDonald Avenue.
Should be very explicit.
And when asked several times, your representatives said there is no catering going on. So one of the reasons that we're having this hearing is because, and now I'm speaking to the owners of the school, right, and the administrators of the school, your representatives have come before this agency and misrepresented frequently what's going on in the school. And the way that we've been able to find out what's going on is literally by going to the internet and Googling stuff. And there's a lot of information on the internet. So let's just say, that's not a great way to develop a good relationship with the board, where your representatives get up there and misrepresent, and then the next time when you're caught in the act, they say, well, it's all in the state. So I would suggest that in future, that you, one of your group, whoever, the administrator, attends the hearings and corrects the misrepresentations from your counsel and your other representatives because it's not funny to misrepresent before a government agency. Okay? So, yeah, please.
I didn't interrupt, but I have this as since 1954, I'm going to say, I was born in 1954.
What is it?
And I was here by the time you came in, 1990.
You're in the 1990s.
I think it's faster. I was here in August, I guess, more than a year ago, parent and my mom were two. I was here then when somebody said there's no catering. I felt and I'm burying myself. I told them later, who asked you to say hello? I'm ashamed of it till now. So I didn't jump up before, tell them, hey, I'm only born in 1954, you're not administering from 1954. And I felt like it's disrespectful to everybody, but just to jump in and say whatever.
Okay, I appreciate that. Maybe you should be the one who comes and gives testimony.
I can only tell you what, I can only tell you what I know.
Okay. So, so there's a, so in the realm of these things, I'm telling you, we learn a lot from the internet. The internet actually shows weddings that took place before 2010. Maybe the internet's wrong, right? We learn how much we fake news, et cetera, et cetera. I need something, a documentation that shows when the catering started. Because it's kind of like, we don't know what to believe anymore because we find out everything from the internet, right? The other thing I found out from the internet is that there's this really great blog where you can write and say, where is a great place to hold a wedding? And on this one blog, everybody's talking about all the different places where you can hold a wedding, and hands down, it's not more if I, it's the best deal, beautiful place, I recommend it highly, and they hold 400 to 500 people, depending on who was answering the little, right? So that's contrary to the statements that you're making, that this is only open to members of the congregation, because that's a general open internet ask, in addition to which we've seen photographs of people who are clearly not members of the congregation having an event there. So that makes me a little concerned about those statements. Yeah. So I'm putting that out there because, again, we don't have a good history with the institution being honest with us. In addition to which, everyone seems to be ignoring the fact that the temporary public assembly permit, which is required by the city, expires in January, right? And everyone is just saying, never mind, we're just booked till.
No, actually, no, not. Let me just.
It is expired, isn't it expired?
There's no question about that, but I think you need some, if that has to be put in greater context. The application for a TPA to extend beyond January 31st was submitted, it was approved by one, if not two, levels of plans exemption. All of these things then go to the borough commissioner. And for some inexplicable reason, he would not offer wide, Mr. Buckman decided that despite the history of TPA being granted by him, he would not go forward with that. So the application was made, he simply said, I'm sorry, I will not sign it this time. He was asked a number, on a number of occasions, why that is, refused to give an answer. He simply suggested that we put in an appeal, a ZRT 1, the ZRT 1 was denied, I'm following up on the appeal on that. But I just don't want it hanging out there that we cavalierly went forward once it was, once it expired, and we didn't do it. And that's not efficient.
What else is, so I also get involved in giving lots of parties for the organizations that I'm involved in. And we need a TPA permit in order to have a party, right? We need insurance, we need all that sort of stuff. When we don't get the TPA permit, we don't have the party.
Appreciate that, but we do have.
Right? We can't, because it's illegal to have a party.
Yes, however, we do have an ongoing PAA permit, and the only reason we went for the TPA was we were asked to get a separate PAA for the party event, but the weddings in a lower number. I was not part of the submission then, I don't know why it was done, but there is a current public assembly permit for 600 people. As a matter of fact, if I recollect properly, the denial of the last TPA, in the denial last TPA, the borough commissioner said, you know, you can have any other events you want associated with this, the school. He'd like to kind of open it. But, but there is, so we can legally occupy the place for 600.
That means, that means children having events, not outsiders coming in or not students. You know, once you graduate, you're not a student anymore, that makes you an O1.
That's correct.
And so these aren't parties for students. If anything, if it's true, and it's not available, if I were to do, you know, make a phone call to the general public, it's still not students who are getting married in these places, it's alumni, those are not the same things as students, right? An alumni, not okay, it's a different thing than if you're.
There could be different requirements.
I'm sorry.
I said, there could be different requirements from the building department and the fire department regarding having a major 400-person event versus having, you know, children and lunch.
The best of my understanding, there would not be a, and Mr. Penner couldn't speak to that issue, but, and to tell you, the only way I, as an attorney representing, the applicant can address that is by reaching back to the law, and you don't want to hear that right.
No, because that's the argument you're making to the building's department, it's really not relevant to us. What I know is relevant is you've got an illegal use in the building and you have to cure it, and you have to operate this with fire department approval. And if the fire department is panicked about it, which they were at the last hearing, where they said, as we're talking about parking, and by the way, we still need to talk about parking. They said, why are we talking about parking? They shouldn't even be in the building.
And it's my, my belief, and I believe the architect shares that with me, that the fire department was fully aware of what's going on, and just like his prior disquisition before the board in November, Mr. Scanduto was wrong. It's as simple as that. And, and we can argue, but the fact of the matter is, the place is safe, I submitted letters indicating that we have a fully functioning fire system.
So it's not, we're not the one that determines if safe, fire department decides.
I appreciate that. But, but once again, I believe that his response was inaccurate, he wrote the other portion of whatever, you know, he insult he felt the fire department received. But with regard to going forward and legalizing this place pursuant to the board's position, Mr. Rothberg is here, in the capacity to explain that.
Let's talk about the fire department.
Okay, okay. Because my understanding, that in a meeting last week with staff, the, the school had committed to suspend valet parking and to have two people in front of the building as what happens with the commissioners and what happens with the caterer on McDonald Avenue, have two people in front of the building making sure that, that there was no congestion in front of the building, and the cars dropping off people who are going to be, they're going to be dropping them off and immediately chasing them away.
Doesn't solve the problem, it makes it worse, sorry.
No, no, no.
It makes it worse. What we were just told by the neighbor in testimony was that he cannot park his own car in his neighborhood until 11 o'clock at night when people start to leave, right?
That's rather fascinating, because that individual actually holds a, has a garage, so I don't know how that's possible.
We had testimony from neighbors who said there's problems parking in the neighborhood, and it just makes sense. If you've got a party for 400 people who are mostly arriving by car because they're dressed very fancily, right?
Maybe 200 cars for if this is, figure 200 cars.
It might probably even work because there's also the band, and there's also all the other people who come, the photographer who has to come with the cards, or et cetera. All of those people are parking in the neighborhood. The whole point of the valet parking and getting it off the street is because you have to take it out of the street system. Again, I repeat, your, your use is not a permitted use, your use is a nuisance to the neighborhood. The trash was the first part of the nuisance we tried to deal with, the buses, which are connected to the school, but really shouldn't have been causing a nuisance in the neighborhood, and the parking is a nuisance in the neighborhood. It's not an option, you have to do it. You have to find a place to put the cars.
First of all, the buses, I believe is a non-issue now, but with regard to parking, I know you at first said that 40 cars are required under zoning legislation, then in the course of the, of the meeting, you went to 43.
No, just because I did the math, I improved on the math, so I went to 43.
Well, I did too, I mean, it doesn't matter, but.
Forty-three, it doesn't, it's only, you know, 25% of the need.
But, let me just take this order, with regard to the buses, they responded to your concerns, they.
Let's not talk about the buses anymore, we're talking about the parking.
They are committed to go out and get off-site parking, but the number of cars you spoke about, the number of cars that you want, are in the process of doing that, but it is not a quick fix, we're doing it as quickly as possible. I only mentioned the buses can show good faith because they went out and that parking lot of the buses is costing $73,000 a year. So they are committed to correct the problems. So in equal measure, they will address the car situation, they're doing that now.
So let's be clear.
Sure.
The catering is not a permitted use, and if it costs money to operate an organization or whatever, a business effectively, a business that makes money for the school, it's going to cost money to operate the business and the parking lot is part of the operation.
We appreciate that.
Independent of the fact that this is a total illegal use, I am going to repeat that over and over in the record because, and that the school knows that they shouldn't be doing, knew at the time that they started and knows today that this is not a permitted use according to the approved plans, the zoning district in which the building is located, et cetera, if I'm not getting anything out of this. I'm bad.
No, I, you've raised all the points, and I think what I'm struggling is when you go back to the permit that was grounded. Fine, the capacity was for 600, but the analysis that was done for secret purposes and everything did not factor in an event space, it factored in the crowd that would be generated from a school. So the whole traffic that, that impact, if there would have been catering, was not at all analyzed.
So.
Don't interrupt.
So we definitely are seeing a situation where a project is occurring without a due analysis that was done for the use that it was considering, and that needs to be corrected.
I appreciate that, I apologize for interrupting, but the fact of the matter is, this was originally put in by Fishmind DeDeo 2002, and it was put in as a programmatic needs case. And the board is fully aware that under the programmatic needs case, the Cornell case, the environmental or deceit finding is, the standard is very, very high. So I doubt very much if it would have had any impact on the finding itself, but we will certainly, if the board provides, we will get to that.
For, for secret purposes though, that, that is about public disclosure and information to the board, and so having the full analysis done is, is, you know, a requirement, and the, the agency at the time made a decision to issue a neg deck based on information that was provided, and that information does not reflect what is.
And it would be more than.
And we often have requests, or, I'm sorry.
I would just say that actually, what, what should happen is that should be part of your analysis, the city plan, and I should go through that. We're interested in.
And then we would like to see what happens early, so it doesn't have to wait for that very long. And then we would like to see what happens early, so it doesn't have to wait for that very long. We can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, that period of time, the... We fully expect the city planning application to be moving forward shortly. We had our inter-divisional meeting at the end of April. We're waiting for their comments back, at which point the process will start with developing a reasonable worst-case scenario, which for secret purposes will address the banquet hall use and the cellar. So that should be happening within the next two months, well. Adam Rothberg.
And after the two months, what happens?
Well, we start the process of, the secret process at city planning starts with developing a reasonable worst-case development scenario, addressing what the use of this space is, what our application is to add a commercial overlay, which will make the banquet hall a performing use. So the secret analysis will address that. And again, whatever requirements they have to address, again, any of the issues that city planning addresses during the full secret analysis, that process will start.
Like, that's just a secret, I'm interested.
Well, the rezoning is moving forward at the same time. So the secret, the city planning applications moves, actually moves forward on kind of two different fronts. The zoning part of it moves forward through technical review, as well as the secret is moving on a parallel course at the same time.
So I have a question. Once it's rezoned, there will be a parking requirement for the...
I don't think there will be a parking requirement. This is cellar space, it's exempt space from floor area, so...
Can I put any commercial use below grade dusted?
So it's just retail use, that's all.
That's really city planning's call, and by the way, they could impose a parking requirement, especially understanding the use.
Not under a rezoning, it's all whatever.
I was just trying to get to that, did it require parking, and if you're going to waive it?
Well, I...
Then become a BSA.
I would also point out, I would also point out that whatever relief we get from city planning, we still need, they are not negating or invalidating or making move the BSA approvals that we have. So at the end of the day, this is still subject to BSA review. We've heard the BSA opinion on parking, whether or not that opinion changes based on it being a zoning requirement or just a, the board's consideration under the other findings for variances is something that will be discussed. Again, until we know what city planning's position is or where we're at with that, it's premature. But the both buildings will still be subject to the BSA's jurisdiction, so...
So in terms of, yeah.
When I finish, I would like to interrupt my friend, Mr. Schwan. About parking, I'm there a lot of times, daytime, then I come to weddings at night. I never put my car. I spoke to Mr. Curlstein from Mayor Plowton, who's coming down next week with Council and U V O, to prep for address problems of the neighborhood, I told him right away, parking. Parking, that's the main issue. It's not only here, it's all over. I don't recommend you to come back home. I would like to explain how our community works. It's not just school, it starts when the child is born, from helping the parents place the other kids they have by other community members, by making the party. There are people that even cook for free for close price, getting delivered. If it's in the synagogue, if it's a girl, it's Saturday morning, if it's a boy, it's Saturday night, the party, and so on. And that goes on until you die. Community, it's our community, 500 people, families, plus. Plus, which I mean is that my son-in-law is a friend that he used to work with. Had a bad accident two weeks ago, stepdad. He made a party this week, a baeas. And he raised a lot of money to help the family. Now, it's not only that, Sapporo community, with the boy brothers, I went, everybody went. It's just not because we're 500 people, we block out other people. Especially schools, we have girls from other communities which don't have own schools. And this still comes in, it's automatic, if it's a wedding, she'll get it. She'll get it on a discounted price, like I got it when I nerved my kids. And I got a discount, nowhere else. I also got it since they opened the door, they were able to give me discounts on tuition as well. Somehow they managed to help me with tuition as well. I guess it's for many other people, including...
Sorry, how can we qualify, working qualifies for a discount?
If you come in and you explain, you show that you don't have the means to pay.
For anybody to make...
Yeah, they take you for, right, no. They take you for, they tell you, "You're going to cut this, you're not going to do what she always told you." If you're going to stand up and show that you're willing to cut from yourself, you're going to cut from our side. That's how it works. And I would like them to vote this. And the community is not only school, it's connected forever until you die.
But with all due respect, every, let's say, religious institution and many other kinds of institutions have that same kind of relationship, right? You start with, your family wants you to be part of this thing since you're a little kid, then you stay with it, and they're involved in your wedding life and your other life and all that. And according to that, all of those not-for-profits, whether, I could even exaggerate this and talk about a museum, I'd be going to the same museum since I was a little kid. According to that, they should have care facility in a museum, even though it's in a residential neighborhood, and rent it out to the public because we're all like one. So the fact is, care facility is a commercial use. And it's, when you're saying it's related to the students, they're not students anymore, they graduated. That's just, that's just fact, right? And I appreciate that they're, you know, feel this camaraderie and alma mater and all that stuff we all do about our schools where we graduated from. That doesn't make them now entitled to a care facility. So, anyway.
I appreciate you talking to me. If I can answer you, like a lawyer, I don't know the most. It was my dream for many years, but unfortunately, I didn't make it. My kids that did graduate from school, four of them have degrees and they're working hard and they're making nice money. Unfortunately, in my days, it wasn't that way, even my school, it's not that way. So that's it. The community, the boys' school is one, as the girls' school, even if it's a separate entity. The high school, boys, they go to Israel, it's one big community. Someone from our community, which is all girls, isn't a need, is sick and is, they come over here. Everybody help, not everybody, they're only helpful 500 people. One is going to get a McCallum, one is going to cook the supper for them, one is, everybody's going to help. It's one big community from, as I told you, from... And when you're born until you, the funeral can be in the synagogue, full screen, no trash.
Okay. And which community did you say?
We are girls, we are girls. I would like them to boost Mr. Schwartz.
Good morning, Madam Chair, everyone, commissioners, everyone, their entire board. My name is Mordecai Schwartz. I'm here because I have the most precious, valuable investment in the school, which are my own kids. And this is the same school where my wife graduated, or my sisters, and I'm part of the girls' community. I've had the honor to meet Madam Chair, some other members at the school last July, July 26th. I believe it was today. Since then, I basically understood where we were at, and I gave the board a lot of my time to follow what's happening. I've listened to every single tape available on every hearing. I've attended executive sessions and hearings as well. And been helping the school implement all the requests on the board. All that I'm here to say today is, number one, I want to thank very much the board for the consideration and being so considerate back in last August. I believe it was at that time, Council Schneckerberg presented a cure for the situation and allowed the school to operate on the legal temporary basis until a final cure is reached. This is why we have Adam Rothberg sitting here, because he's part of the city planning rezoning change. I want to say that from day number one, from when I met the board and on, the school has been extremely, extremely responsive to every single request that the board has mentioned. Some of it may have been miscommunicated, and that's a reason why it may seem that it wasn't complied. But everything was taken serious. And I'll start with just seeing what was mentioned already. I believe it was the August 2nd hearing where the board has requested that we take all the buses off curbside parking and should be parked off-site. Immediately then, meaning starting September of 2016, we, the school already had rented a place and as Mr. Klein mentioned, is paying an annual fee of $72,000. Since the catering part of the banquet hall was only for a temporary basis and would be required to abide by the TPA rules, which that was also what Mr. Scaduto requested at the August 2nd hearing, that we should have the minimum fire guards, the fire guards required. And at that time, it was said that that's determined, depending on the event and depending on how the approval of the TPA will come through, that's the amount of fire guards we need. I'm proud to say that from that day on, every single event that was held in that school had the amount of fire guards required. And this is also, it's a costly thing, four fire guards, and I think it's a costly thing.
Anyway, I'm sorry to interrupt you, of indicating proof of that, like sign-in sheets or...
To the minimum, we got a letter from the security company, basically certified that what we're saying there is true. And I believe that if you'd like to get more information, that we can get that.
From the company, they must have either payroll records or something showing these four fire guards give us their certification card.
Absolutely. I mean, whatever will be determined and clear instructions given to us, we will abide by. Because this is something that we're proud of, something that we have done, something that we have spent a lot of money on, and there's no reason we should hide it. And for that same reason, we had no reason to hide from the fire department anything that's happened there because we, as far as we're concerned, to the best of our knowledge, we were in compliance. At the November hearing, Mr. Scaduto got up and basically complained and said that they were never notified. In return to that, we, I believe Mr. Klein sent to Mr. Scaduto on November 27th that email, the reports that the fire department visited the site on September 6th specifically states the TPA number. So it's not like they randomly came because somebody sent them, they specifically came to inspect for a TPA. And that's what they charged us for, I believe it totaled $730,000 if I remember correctly. And then we also know that every single TPA that we got had a copy to the fire department. So when Mr. Scaduto gets up there and says, "We weren't notified," obviously it was some kind of miscommunication, but which again, we have nothing to hide because as far as we're concerned, we're in compliance as far as fires.
Well, we still have a question regarding what the logs were sent to the D O B. And that has to happen on every event.
That, Mr. Penner will answer that. So then, this was under the November hearing. On the February 15 hearing, I believe, also 14, Mr. Scaduto had no comments regarding any TPA issues to have fire. April 25th comes up and walks up there, and I saw him walk up there, and I would be, I would not know the ins and outs of what's happening, and I would be furious as well. So all that I'm here to say, we are here to comply with whatever request the board requests. You may have some counter and say, "Well, we said this in this particular event, we said so, and it took a little bit longer time to comply with." Sometimes when you come out of here, it's not that clear. So if we didn't get the clear guidance, sometimes it can be more time-consuming. But I'm here basically to tell you to thank you very much for your consideration until now and tell you that the school is committed to comply with whatever we need to do in order to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. So what we do need is proof that the fire guards have been present at every time. So they, and definitely because we charge a lot of money, fire guards, that they've had people present at all of the events. And then proof that the fire, that the Department of Buildings was notified pursuant to the TPA regulations?
Do you know who those letters were faxed to?
Well, we get a copy of the letters.
I know who, I sent them to the school.
So not, you're the Architect of Record, and you're responsible for sending it to the building department, I believe. So we would like to know, well, do you know who you sent it to?
I did not send it to the building department entirely. I have the letters, I did the inspections, and I have logs of those inspections. But I did not send those letters directly to, and I keep a record of all my control inspections. But I did not send them over to the Department of Buildings. I did on two occasions speak to the fire department, who also attended those inspections. And it was clear to me, appeared to them, that the event, the space was proper and organized for the event in that year.
But you understand now the difference between this? This is not an inspection where you and fire department go in to check on whether the TPA should be renewed. This is your obligation as the Architect of Record to go in at every event. And it sounds kind of extreme, but a TPA permit is actually not for this purpose. Normally, TPA permits are for a week or something like that. And you do have to go in every single day and check because during the course of the event, things get disturbed, tables fall down, the exit gets locked, all of that kind of thing. And that's why you are supposed to be checking every single day because this is not the proper use of a TPA permit. But that's what happens when you have an illegal use. And the city, by the way, is going out of its way to accommodate, which is very hard for me to get my head around as a lawyer, your illegal use for however many months this is, since we finally discovered on our own that this illegal use was going on for, depends on who does the math, seven years, 10 years, more years than that. Okay? So for Mr. Penner, is that right? You've taken on sort of a hefty responsibility as the Architect of Record here because we expect you to comply with the terms of the TPA. And since you have no TPA, which is even harder for me to get my head around, but you continue to have, whoops, I don't know how many events without the TPA present, either you persuade the Department of Buildings that it's okay to be doing this without a TPA, or you get the TPA and you make these reports every single day. That's a significant, let's say, expense and commitment on the part of the architect because it means you've got essentially a person who spent their day, with the exception of maybe Friday and Saturday, not going to the site and expecting that it complied, that the exits complied, was complying, everything. That's what you signed up for.
But the inspection states that it's prior to the event, it doesn't obligate me to be there during the event.
No, prior to.
And so I'm telling you that I was there prior to...
But you're saying, like, you were there September 1st, and then events continued over a three-month period. That doesn't mean you went every day, every time there was an event.
Yes, either myself or someone whom I employ, and I'm part of the inspection, there are people who do. So if there's an event scheduled for the day, we go there prior to the event and inspect the premises. What I'm saying is, is that, right, those inspection reports as per the TPA were to go forward to the building's construction, and they were not. So, but I keep out the reports, and I can follow up with the building department.
Well, I'm not sure, given the fact that might be part of the thinking of the buildings department in terms of renewing them, TPA.
Right, that you're not complying, which is probably why the fire department is so upset. So clearly, you're not complying.
That, I believe, is an incorrect assumption based on my conversation with the buildings department and telling me that their own building inspectors have been at the premises on many occasions and have always found it to be a safe... on many occasions, and have always found it to be a safe location. Their reasoning for not renewing our current requests for the temporary TPA was not clear to any of us, but we do know that it was denied. But it was approved by the plans examiner, the senior plans examiner at the buildings department, but it has to be signed off by the borough commissioner, and it was not approved.
Correct.
With no explanation.
But it means you don't have one, it's pretty simple.
No, that's true.
All right. So, here's the thing, this board is put in a very, very unpleasant position of trying to decide whether we should actually, the purpose of this hearing, so that the administrators and everybody else at the school understand this, is this is a compliance hearing, because we learned through, frankly, no help of your representatives, that this illegal use has been going on for years, right? Without the board being informed of illegal use. And so, we hold compliance hearings to decide whether the variance, or whatever approval it is we grabbed it, should be revoked, because the building is not in compliance with the terms of the grant. So, we have two buildings that were granted for a school, neither of which are being used entirely legally. So, like, say, during the day, I guess, they're being used as a school, that much I have to assume, because I know that there, I saw children, so I assume they actually go to school there. But in the evening, it's being used illegally. And so, we could easily say here, you're not in compliance, you have 30 days to make it in compliance, that's the end, right? Puts you out of business until you figure this out with city planning. We're instead being put in this very uncomfortable position by the forces that may, right? To try to accommodate this illegal use, which I keep repeating, I need it on the record, we identify the use as illegal, and to try to make it not dangerous, right? So, again, Mr. Penner, I'm really sorry, I'm an architect, I wouldn't want to be in your place, right? But in order for them to comply, you have to comply with the terms of this TPA, which is expired, but it has specific terms, and you must, every day that there is an event, every day there's an event, so they have the little checks on the chart, on the map, send someone from your office who makes an inspection of a list of things that you, as the architect of record, decide need to be inspected, and that inspection report must be submitted to the Department of Buildings, okay? And if it's not, and actually, as long as we're at it, it should put Mr. Bluff in here, okay? So, Commissioner Bluff in, and as long as you're at it, to clear up things, CC Mr. Scaduto, so it's clear that you have submitted. Every day, okay? This will go on for a long time, because if, if indeed the city planning commission chooses to rezon this, to legalize the use by creating a commercial overlay, which means it's commercial use, this is gonna take a while. And so, your commitment is long, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the next part is, so we need, and if you have log reports of the times that you've inspected, send us the log reports, and also, which will forward to the fire department, okay? And then, the, there was one other one that...
You needed the fire.
The guards, the proof that the guards were present, with their sort of clock in log information. Okay, and then, we need immediately a solution on the parking. A solution for the valet parking, we need that immediately. So, make a fast deal with the neighborhood, that's all I can say. Yes, the point. Sorry, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to sweep this off, as Ms. Monroe suggested. So, if I were in Mr. Penner's place, I might not want this job. If there is, if you choose to, you know, move on and decide to pursue other, other work, the superseding architect needs to follow the same protocol. So, again, I'm saying that to the administrators, that you must make sure that your architect, every single day that there's an event, files something with, files the report of inspection with the Department of Buildings, and CCs the fire department, whether it's Mr. Penner or a superseding architect, okay?
I just wanted to put my parents on, Hillary Schultz, attorney, representing the class, state attorney, for the state of New York City, state neighbor, who has
Just that you're present, I don't want to add, but actually, just to fill us in so that the record understands that your client has appeared here several times complaining about the parking in the trash, and in general, about how in the world can this use be going on, it was not even allowed. Very good question.
We're here to monitor the situation, and here's the opposite of board is trying to house this situation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank everybody. My name is Danny Carlson, the commissioner of State of California, Greenfield, who represent hundreds of the families who are part of the congregation, and the children attend the school, and they've been married, though. And, you know, really plays a central role in the community life of probably at least a few thousand of our residents. So, we really appreciate all of the time and attention and resources that the board, as an institution, has devoted to the project. We appreciate that all of these key issues exist, parking issues, you know, the parking issues. And we know that as we continue to grow, that we continue to face them, we appreciate working with everybody and working through them. I just wanted to thank you and thank the other members.
Anybody else want to add anything? Any commissioners, open questions?
Just have a minor correction. This is from Mr. Penner. When you do submit the plans next time, just make sure these are, there are 10 tables, 10 chairs to a table, not 12.
Are these 12 or 10 seats?
For the 600 seat, it's 12, which is what would be needed for the school. But I think in the, in the process of correcting it, that just, it must have been just a little aside.
That's the template.
Yeah, that's the template.
And the occupancy actually includes the staff.
Yes.
Right? So, the number of people within the seat should actually be less.
Which is an important point, because since my important source of information is the internet, when you go on and you're looking for a nice place to rent for your wedding, it says 400 to 500 people. Oh, it also said 180 couples room. So, that does allow room for staff, but that's the minimum, right? So, we learned that the TPAs for any public assembly permit includes all staff. So, that's your servers, your bed, your photographers, everybody, everybody.
Kitchen staff.
Kitchen staff, all that stuff. So, when you're calculating who's coming, if 400 is the wrong number, please let us know.
That's my only complaint against the catering, that they require a minimum of 180. The maximum I have is 100 couples, but they do pack me out with the rest of the food, and I take it home for supper.
I have actually one question, just to clarify, for this, this calendar. Is this, I know this is through May, March 2018, is this subject to, are you gonna add more events? Is this possible, more events to be added in the interim? Or is this kind of set?
If they are added, we'll advise you.
Thank you. I mean, in other words.
Well, if you can pass the message around.
No, no, but, and to that point, I'm just curious whether the school's even a little bit concerned that maybe you don't get to continue with this operation, right? It's depending on technically legalization by city planning. What if city planning ultimately decides that you can't have this thing, right? So, then, in that position, if I was owning a business where I'm promising lots and lots of couples into 2019, that sure, you can have your wedding here, wouldn't I be a little apprehensive that maybe the event's gonna take, can't take place? And then, you've given a deposit that you're going to have to refund, and it looks really bad, it's that bad reputation, and so on. So, I tread carefully about forward, you know, forward booking into 20, already almost 2019, right? So, that's business, right? It's reality of business, and the expectation of business. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Anyone want to add anything?
Do you want to talk about next time?
Yeah, right, right. So, the next time is not gonna be a long time, because you don't need a long time to accomplish this, right? You're going to provide us with the records you already have. You're gonna provide us, the architect will provide us on a day-by-day basis. When did the event start again?
14th.
The 14th.
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. So, start, events are starting again. So, the architect will provide us with his inspection information. We'll get the fire.
Do you want us to send it to the DOB and you?
Yes, we also, yes, sorry. So, DOB, fire department, and us. It's into my attention. And so, we want, from going from the, when's it, May 14th? May 14th forward until our next hearing, we want all of those reports from the architect, we want the fire departments, I mean, your, your fire inspection companies' records, all the way up until that point, right?
And is it, and just, you mentioned the 14th, is it useful to differ, and I think this is to be fair to the, is it useful to differentiate between, I mean, because May 14th could be a Mother's Day event for the, for the students.
We don't know.
And that could be under their current PPA, could be sort of a permissible use, etc. Obviously, it's. So, drilling down into this a little bit more to, so that we can understand.
Which is school event that we do not.
Which is school events, which are not, would be very helpful, I think, just because the, the school events.
Right.
Take them off.
Clear, right. School events means, school events, children from the school, parents of the children and those children doing stuff together, right?
If there is a fundraising going on for the school purposes, that's a school event as a, right?
Right.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, right. If that, any of that is actually occurring, we, yeah, we should know about, right? Okay, that's fair.
So, yeah, I can drill that down. I would just, in terms of time, I don't know how quickly you want them back, but just, but based on, I'm just.
What person did it last for, July?
July.
July 18th?
Sure. Yeah, we can, July.
Yeah, so July 18th.
And then, do you want to submission June 28th?
Yeah. Okay, so submission June 28th, and it's a July 18th continuation on this discussion. I expect there to be parking, a parking slot secured, and happy release, and a picture of parking lot, okay? Not to mention where it is on the map, how far away from the site.
And that it's legal parking.
And that it's legal parking.
And we'll be at plenty to reach.
Yes. I said parking. Thank you all for coming. This is the last little word of please. Please, one of the people, one of the administrators, come to this next hearing, perhaps standing next to your legal representative, and when you hear an un, let's say, incorrect statement being made, correct.
If they stand in front of it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Social and compliantery of May 9, 2018.